Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock, which means it's time for our December City of Beaver Creek Planning Commission meeting. And just to remind everybody, it is December 7th, and that's the 81st anniversary of Pearl Harbor Day, so keep those folks in your mind. So we've called to order, so if you would read the roll, please, ma'am.
Mr. Ayers.
Here.
Mr. Diker.
Here.
Mr. Loftus.
Here.
Mr. Meyer.
Here.
Mr. Self. Here. And our agenda, we're good for the agenda. We've got two items on the agenda this evening, so we're good for that. I'll need a motion to approve tonight's agenda, gentlemen.
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt tonight's agenda.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll second.
I have a second. We'll do that by general consensus. Thank you very much. Minutes from the November meeting. Any additions, corrections, changes? Hearing none. I need a motion for that, please.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes from the November Plan Commission meeting.
Mr. Chair, I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, and we'll do that by general consensus. Thank you. We have two public hearings this evening as our business. And just to give you the cliff notes on how we do our public hearings, we will ask the applicant to make a presentation, and then, once the applicant is finished, the staff will make their report. Once that's done, we will open the floor for public input. We ask you to limit yourself to three minutes, if you would, so we are not here all night, but we will hear everybody that wishes to speak. Once everybody has spoken, I'll ask for written input from our clerk. Then we will close the public hearing. We will discuss, and hopefully, we will have a decision. So without further ado, read what we've got.
Okay. This is case number PUD 22-4 on an application filed by DHC Partners LLC, 7953 Washington Woods Drive, Dayton, Ohio 45459. The application requests approval to rezone 8.429 acres from R1A, one-family residential district, and A1 agricultural district, to a RPUD residential plan unit development to allow for the construction of a retirement community. The properties are located at 2705 Lillian Lane, further described in Book Four, Page Four, Parsel Six and Fourteen, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. I presume we have someone here representing the developer. Step right on up and give us your report, if you would.
Okay. I am Manil Agarwal, and we are planning to develop a senior living there, and we have put an application for that. We are considering multiple called buildings for now. I believe we will discuss with the architect in more detail after the civil engineering study is completed in due diligence. We will seek your guidance as we develop the site-specific plan. We'll be talking to local developers after our initial site plan is in place. The focus will be on local reputed and approved developers that have done work in Beaver Creek city area. There is a tremendous interest from our community for this project. We should be able to get good fill rate of community members willing to commit to development. Our first focus is acquisition of properly zoned land, then prepare a site-specific plan, select a developer, present the concept to the community for buy-in, and then begin the development.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Now we'll hear from staff.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. The case you have before you is PUD 22-4. It's a rezoning for a new RPUD residential plan unit development. The applicant's requesting to rezone approximately 8.4 acres. Part of it is zoned R1A, single-family, and part of it is zoned A1 agricultural. The property is located in northern Beaver Creek. It's just east of the intersection of North Fairfield Road and New Germany Trade Mine, about 400, 500 feet south of where New Germany Trade Mine and Lillian Lane meet. Seen here is a closer aerial photo. You can see there's two parcels. One has very limited frontage on Lillian, but does have frontage on a remnant stub road that is a public road, Temple Lane. And then the northern parcel has frontage on Lillian Lane. To the north is R1AA. It's a single-family, a large lot, a state residential lot. To the east is, to the east and southeast, is RPUD medium-density residential. To the south is the Hindu Temple. It's part of CPUD 08-1. And then to the west is part of 94-4 commercial plan development. It's the DSW and many other tenant spaces in that large, big box development to the east and west. The property on the land use plan is designated as medium-density residential, and the way that's defined within the land use plan is less than 6.01 dwelling units an acre, so six dwelling units an acre or less is how we define medium-density residential. In terms of the proposed change, with medium-density residential, we started with R3, R4, because that's where we would see medium-density residential, and modified the list of permitted uses within the R3, R4. So the proposed uses within your resolution for your consideration include one-family, two-family dwellings, multiple-family dwellings, boarding houses, public centers, libraries, and townhouses. There are some uses within the R3 that we didn't feel was appropriate there, such as row houses, dormitory, group housing, fraternity, sororities, private schools, and so those are excluded in the proposed resolution. In terms of density, to meet the medium-density residential, as shown in the land use plan, we propose a density up to six dwelling units an acre on that property that would yield about 50 units. I think it's right at like 50.4, so we round down to 50 units. Also require a 50-foot buffer with the R1AA property to the north. There is a small caveat in the resolution that if that property would develop, the R1AA would develop something other than, you know, a multi, you know, a medium-density residential or commercial, then they can forego that 50-foot buffer. The reason we buffer it is because it's a single-family residential to the north. Just wanted to point out that this whole area, everywhere north of Kemp Road, is part of an impact fee district, so any development here, they would be required to pay impact fees, and the intent of that is to pay into the impact fee fund so that if there's any improvements needed anywhere in the impact fee district, you know, the city is responsible for those improvements, and we use the funds that any builder that puts in. So anything that was done to the east, those medium densities to the east and to the south, all that had to pay impact fees. All the commercial, they all pay impact fees when they move in, and they pay into that fund so that we can use it to widen New Germany Trade Line if we need, or add turn lanes, or anything like that. So all that's addressed in the second phase. This being a PUD, just to point out, this is the first phase of the PUD. The second phase would be site plan, where we look at architectural, we look at building types, building sizes, locations, parking, stormwater detention, landscape lighting. So this is just a regulatory phase where we're trying to get established uses, densities, and setbacks. And if they go with the senior living, or multifamily, or any residential, they would also have to pay into the park fee impact. There's park fees to pay for the overall park district. So staff does recommend approval of the applicant's request. There are six conditions in the proposed resolution for your consideration, and I'll be happy to answer any questions following the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Not quite yet. Just as a reminder, folks, what we are looking at this evening is a rezoning. We are not looking at any kind of a layout or a plan for what will go on that property in terms of specific buildings, landscaping, grading, anything like that. We are just looking at rezoning. We have a parcel here that has two different zonings on it, and it's just not good planning to proceed any further with any kind of development on a parcel where not only is the zoning split, but it is not appropriate or is not legal for what the applicant wants to build. So with that in mind, this is a public hearing, and if you wish to speak, if you will step right up to the microphone and give us your name and address, and have your three minutes. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Mr. Ed Stanek. I am a resident of the condominium complex immediately adjacent to the properties in question. I represent the community. To best of my knowledge, I've run for president of the association. I spoke with a few people that were unaware of this zoning. Our complex comprises about 300-plus residential properties. I live in the Willow Brook Road, which immediately adjacent to the A1 property, and I'm in the first building there. We have, when I found out about this, and I had some initial conversations with the gentleman here that is proposing the change in zoning, and he seems like a nice gentleman, and I think his intentions are good. Part of our problem, our concern, is the deterioration of the roadway, Lillian Lane, which has increased traffic since that was cut through from Lillian Lane through to Lakeside, or Lakeview Drive. I don't know if everybody here is aware of that, but just within the last year and a half, I believe, or two years, there is a senior apartment complex that was built close to Lakeview and Lillian Lane, just outside of our property line. We were never informed about any kind of traffic studies or other impediments that might have created a difficulty in our community as a whole in that traffic is speeding through that area, deterioration of the roadways, and other things that I think would be impacted by any kind of a massive type of development, or a larger development within the complex itself. The question I was going to ask the gentleman here who did the study for the city was the R1AA prior, you know, right behind the, there's a single-family home. The one single-family home has, the gentleman died, and the family sold it, I believe. The home next to that is the only other residential property on that side of the road prior to the Child Development Center that's just to the north of that. I believe the property that's in green, or covered in greenery, is somewhat undevelopable. Is that true? Is that a low area, or creek bed, or something like that?
There's a question. Back and forth, hard without my.
Yeah. Because we have a retention center there that goes into it. What I'm concerned about is-
We will ask about that so that Randy doesn't have to interrupt your flow.
So anyway, our concern as a complex is traffic and whatever potential downside there might be to this type of development. And again, we had short notice. I received a notice that probably came during the Thanksgiving holidays, and I just received it a few days ago, and responded to someone from the board here, I believe. And I spoke to two of the council members, Chuck Kern and Don Adams, today, and they were unaware of this. But it may be that if we could have a tabling of this zoning to, for us as a community to have a discussion with the developer, to see where his intentions are and what we can do before a zoning is actually made, a decision is made, because once that is done, of course, it's more difficult to object. So that's where I stand. I feel I represent many of the members of the association and homeowners, and we are a substantial taxpaying base. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Don't be shy. We don't bite. Anybody, anyone else wish to speak on this? Okay, hearing none. Last chance. I'll close the public hearing and ask if we had any written input.
We did receive written input. Planning commissioners have received a copy of the two emails received. The first one was from Barbara Rivard of 3053 Willow Brook Way, and then the other one was from Shereesh Sharma of 3055 Willow Brook Way, and they were both in opposition of the case.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we have closed the public hearing, so now it is our turn, and I will start on my left.
All right. So start with some questions for staff. Sir? We'll start with an easy one, and then we'll go to the harder ones. So I know that this isn't a site plan, and this is just, but I'm trying to understand, as we heard, both written as well as verbal input on traffic. Can you explain what that little road that kind of hangs off of the temple but doesn't quite connect into Lillian Road? Like, what was the purpose of that? And-
Yeah, that was a weird remnant when they extended Lillian Lane many, many years ago. It was, because that's an individual lot there, they needed to get public access, so they want to create a situation where they've got an existing lot, and they realign the road, and then that lot doesn't have access to a public road anymore. So they just have that public stub right there, so that that empty lot has access on, instead of, that little tiny area is not enough to put a driveway on, so.
Okay, and is that, that whole, like, area that's kind of, would be in that triangle, if it was complete?
That's all part of public right-of-way.
Okay. All right, so since one of the factors we think about when looking at a rezoning is the potential impact on public service, or, I'm sorry, the site is accessible from current or planned public thoroughfares adequate to carry traffic, which will be imposed upon them by the proposed development. We heard information regarding the traffic concerns. I certainly would understand that, given the number of multifamily complexes in the area that will all be sharing that road. What has the city or staff looked at when it comes to traffic patterns, traffic studies regarding the adequacy of that road, and how it would increase what I imagine would be a substantial amount of traffic based on the proposed plan?
Well, again, this is an area where they pay public, they would have to pay impact fees, so if there were any needed improvements on Lillian Lane because of this property, or this project, being in the impact fee district, it would be on the city to do that improvement. Now, we looked at, really, the relative increase in traffic that this would cause would be small compared to what's out on New Germany Trade Mine right now. Looking at, the biggest impact would be from a single-family neighborhood. I talked to the engineer, our engineer, about what impacts this would have, going with the 50, if they were to build 50 units max, is what a six dwelling units an acre would be. And a senior living center would increase the traffic by 186 total trips per day. A 50-unit, normal apartment, a multifamily complex would create by 333 trips per day, and then a single-family would be 480 trips per day. So the retirement community is much, is less than half of what a single-family residential neighborhood. So when you're talking 9, 10,000 cars a day out on New Germany Trade Mine, the relative increase in traffic is pretty minor, not a less than 1% increase.
Now, that 188, did that just take into account the residents? I know that we don't have a site plan, but we potentially have family who'd come visit, staff, you know, depending on what kind of facilities or services they might offer at the retirement community, and what kind of employment. Do we know if that was contemplated in the-
Well, it's just a number from the engineering handbook, and they come up with a number based on historical practices of other facilities of similar type, so I would have to really dig into it to see if they considered, they included when they went out to these facilities and counted traffic, whether it was just residents, or my guess would be it was all traffic in and out of the development.
So I'll leave this with just a comment. I mean, the part that I'm concerned about is we have so many multi-residential sharing a two-lane road, and so I'm just concerned, and can understand that the residents concerned about 188 more trips, if that's really the number, right? So with that, I'm done with questions until maybe a second round, but just letting you know where my thoughts are.
And just want to point out, if we were to try to use traffic as a way to not approve a rezoning, you know, the state law, or state court, and Josh, correct me if I'm wrong, but we would have to provide, the city would have to provide a traffic study to justify that. So that would be something we'd have to consider. For something this small, this is, I mean, on a relative scale, this is a pretty small project. On the overall scheme of North Beaver Creek, of New Germany Trade Mine, even of Lillian Lane, I mean, there are more units in that multifamily up there to the east than there would be in this, regardless of how it develops, if it develops as a multifamily, or it's retirement community, or a single-family, it would be much less than the number of units that are on there now.
No, 100%. I think that, so I hear you loud and clear. I think for where my thought process is, is if, I don't fully appreciate the totality of the problem, that 188 more cars, both on that road, as well as where it empties out onto the other major thoroughfares, how much, what a bigger increase that would be. And so I'm just trying to, whatever the results are tonight, right, I just want us to kind of be thinking through that when we're developing or coming up with that property, so.
So that's the reason, though, that's the reason that they collect the impact fee, right? And that is, in that district, the impact fee is used, collected and used, in case there's an impact on the road or some kind of infrastructure. And if, correct me if I'm wrong, but everybody pays that in that district for commercial purposes, right?
Commercial and residential. When you build anything new.
So even the multifamilies to the east?
They would have paid impact fee back in 96 when they built, or in the late 90s.
Correct, yeah. Regardless of the year, yeah. So their impact fee could potentially go to fixing the roads if there's an issue or an impact to the roads.
I'm sure it was spent already, but yeah, that was the intent, was because when they, before the Brookstone was there, New Jeremy Trade Mine was a much smaller road, so when we added lanes into it, we used the impact fee money that we had collected to pay for those widening lanes because of the increased traffic. And so that's the intent of the impact fee, is to pay it forward, essentially, that you're paying for what's going to be needed in the future.
And Mr. Stanek had brought up a point regarding the wooded area to the north, whether it's a depression, or a swale, or a creek. Can you address that?
I mean, there's a small, it gets pretty steep when you get closer to New Jeremy Trade Mine, but, you know, to call it undevelopable, I wouldn't say that. You know, retaining walls can be built, and there is a floodplain over there, so that would have to be taken into consideration, too, but that's really a separate issue from this case, but I wouldn't call it undevelopable.
But it's not like in a 100-year floodplain, or it's just a regular?
Well, I mean, there's, a small portion of it is in part of the regulatory floodplain, just because of the way it dips, but, you know, we have floodplain regulations that require buildings to be built two feet above whatever that flood elevation is to get it out of the floodplain, so that we don't have new structures built in the floodplain. All that would have to be considered if that ever moved forward at a future date.
Okay. And then, I just have a procedural question. So you had said, going forward, there may be two resolutions on which we'd vote, the zoning change, and then this specific site plan, but wouldn't we also need to do at some point a conditional use approval if they're going to do a retirement?
Actually, yes. I mean, this, because this was, because retirement communities are conditional use in an R3, and we kind of adopted the R3, a version of the R3, R4 zoning, yeah, it's a conditional use, so it would have to go through that as well. Those usually go concurrent with the site plan, though.
Okay. And so that would be another check in balance, I guess, that would sit with us here on the Planning Commission. Perfect. Thank you.
I guess it's my turn. I don't really have a lot of questions on this one. I really, I don't have any questions.
Okay.
I don't think I really have any other questions, other than one of the written inputs just addressed, like, traffic and sightlines and stuff like that, and I just, I know that will be addressed via the site plan, right?
Correct.
Yeah, just wanted to state that, so, thank you.
My turn. I got a few questions for you, and one for the applicant, but I'll, since you're up there, I'll ask you first.
Appreciate it.
Now, we're doing a rezoning, and I know you don't condition rezoning, but this is rezoning to an RPUD.
Yeah, there's six conditions in the resolution.
Right, okay. Well, y'all taught me we don't, except for PUDs, you don't condition zoning. One of the things that I think would be helpful is if we knew for sure this was going to be a retirement community as opposed to a regular commercial apartment development. And I don't know if we can condition it to that or not.
I mean, the Planning Commission surely has the leisure to remove some of the permitted uses.
Okay.
I was just, yeah, I mean-
Since traffic, traffic seems to be a concern of the folks there, and just as an aside, when we heard the rezoning for both the apartments and the condos, the residents that lived in that area were saying exactly the same thing that y'all are saying, but it's very difficult, it's essentially impossible to turn down a rezoning simply because of traffic. The law does not like that.
You are correct.
Okay, thank you. I'm not a lawyer, and I don't play one on TV, but I do know that. So we have to look at it from the standpoint of, is it compatible with the surrounding uses? And since the surrounding uses, with one exception, are all multifamily, it looks compatible to me. The, and the other thing about traffic is, Lillian Lane dead-ending was a real thorn for a long time, and when the, and help me out here, Randy, the new seniors apartments that are just to the south.
It's hard to see on that, but yeah. On the TV screen, the laser pointer doesn't work, but yeah.
Of course. To the south of the temple, and to the, to the west of Lillian Lane. Lillian Lane was cut through to Lakeview specifically for that development, and it also meant that there was a lot of heavy traffic that was going through the single-family development just to the east, Stone Falls.
That's correct, yeah.
And those folks are really happy that it's not going through Stone Falls anymore.
Correct. Yeah, Lillian Lane has always been that extension, for as long as I've been here, even before it was built, it was on the long-term, it was on the thoroughfare plan as a future extension because of- because of, it was just, we were just holding off until that property, where the senior parts.
I longed for that for a long time because it did cause problems.
Yeah, because you were diverting a lot of traffic through Stone Falls, and that's why they had the speed bumps over there.
So, the, let's see. One question for our applicant, actually, two questions for our applicant, if you would. Step right on up. They're easy. Question number one, would you have a problem if we, excuse me, if we restricted the, what would go there to a seniors, a seniors complex?
No problem.
No problem, okay. Second question, is this going to be strictly a not palliative care or health care or nursing home? Is it, it's going to be straight seniors apartments?
Absolutely.
Okay, good. That's all I needed. See, I told you it was easy. Gentlemen, second helpings here. You just look like you want to. Okay.
I'm good, Ms. James.
Okay. So, gentlemen, we've got, we've got a proposal by, or a, where is it here? Yes, with the conditions. Sorry, folks, we're having to root through a lot of pages here to find the, and folks, just so you will know, the, we are, in this case, we are advisory to city council. So, what we vote on tonight will still go to city council for their approval or disapproval. So, just wanted you to know that in this particular case, this does not end with us. There are some cases that do, and one of them is conditional use, but this is not a conditional use tonight. We'll look at that later. Okay, gentlemen, on the resolution, we have a set of permitted uses that are limited, and the developer has indicated, or the applicant, rather, has indicated that he would have no problem with striking everything but a seniors retirement complex. That would be a retirement community if you look under section three, nursing home assisted living facilities, adult daycare and/or retirement community. So, if you want to restrict this to that only, the developer, or the applicant, rather, has indicated that they would have no problem with that, and that might ally some of the, some of the concerns of the nearby residents. But I can't make the motion unless I have my, unless I have my gavel over.
Ask the, ask the city council or the councillor for the city. Should we just strike out all, if we would move forward on that resolution, would we want to strike, would we want to strike number two completely out, or how would we want to modify that if I was to make a motion?
I need to know exactly what I'm looking at here. Strike number two where?
The six conditions in the resolution.
Why didn't it be 3B?
No, you.
Okay, gosh. I've got too many pages too.
Yeah.
What we're looking at specifically is under, under, section one, number two, the multifamily dwellings, which is, that's zoning speak for an apartment versus what is in section number three B, which among other things is retirement communities. And that is usually apartments, not nursing homes, but apartments with an age restriction. You've got to be 55, or you've got to be 60 or whatever to be able to live there. We have one of those on North Fairfield next to the Nazarene Church. So.
So, which sections were you asking to be completely stricted, or I missed?
Should it be section two, or should it be, I'm sorry, in section one, subsection two, the permitted uses, should we just strike that entirety of that wording there to, yeah, to basically just kind of block us in as a nursing home?
By leaving three, that is the nursing home part, and by striking subsection two, that would strike out what seems to be some concerns, some valid traffic concerns. It's been our experience when we have approved these retirement, retirement communities, that the in-and-out traffic, the only thing that's even lower is nursing homes. It's, it should not really make much difference.
It, to me, I think two and three read as advisory, right? They tell you what you can, what's possible to be done in those, in those uses, in that zoning. And three especially, right, it's definitely advisory because it says, hey, this has to be approved as a conditional use.
Right, well, yeah, section three says that it, that's where the conditional use comes in.
Correct. So, I don't see two or three as authoritative, but I guess I'll leave that to.
So, if you want to limit this to a retirement, I would, to a retirement community, I would strike all of two, and make three the new number two, and renumber them.
Sure. Okay. Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to strike section one, subsection two, in its entirety.
Mr. Chair, before, can I ask one more question to Randy? So, do we have any other PUDs where we only have one, like, use?
Yes. Parker Overlip Drive, it's not just one use, but it's retirement communities and nursing homes, and I believe it does allow for institution, like the church, or it's limited, so we have that.
So, this wouldn't be a completely, like, one-off?
No. The only concern with limiting it is if this applicant decides to not go, then we'd have to come back in the board if we did something other than a retirement community. I mean, we'd have to go through the whole process again, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Continue.
Yeah, so, so I would move to strike section one, subsection two, in its entirety, and then renumber three, four, five, and six, two, two, three, four, and five.
Okay, and since we are making a change to the, to the resolution, I'll need, we'll need a vote on that first. Oh, yeah, I do need a second, sorry.
Mr. Chair, I'd second.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion in a second. The one from Melissa, keeping me honest, I don't know what I'd do.
Mr. Diker.
Yes.
Mr. Loftus.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
No.
Mr. Ayers.
No.
Mr. Self.
Yes. Motion carry, the change carries three to two, and now we will vote on the, on the resolution as amended. Anything else for the good of the order, folks, before we vote? Last chance.
Can I make a rebuttal on that?
No. The public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve PUD 22-4 rezoning with the attached, with the amended five conditions.
Ms. Charles, second.
I have a motion in a second.
Mr. Loftus.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
Mr. Diker.
Yes.
Mr. Self.
Yes. Motion carries five zero, and we will see you one of these days with a specific site plan and the conditional use paperwork. Thank you very much. Okay, we have a second public hearing tonight, and without further ado, read it to us.
This is case number Z22-2 on an application filed by Matthew Thomas, 3550 Woodman Drive, Kettering, Ohio, 45429. The application requests the rezoning of 10.177 acres from R1A, one-family residential district, to A1 agricultural district. The property is located at the southwest corner of I-675 and East Patterson Road, further described as book two, page eight, parcel 74, on the Greene County Property Tax Alice.
Thank you, and I'd be willing to wager the folks that are left here are probably interested in this. So, if, if the applicant would step forward and tell us what you have in mind.
Yeah, so, my wife and I bought this property, and our main goal with it is to build a single-family home for us to live in on there, and we were wanting to rezone it agricultural to be able to keep a couple animals on there. We're not planning on turning it into a big cattle farm or anything like that, but in case, like, down the road, our kids want to get some, show animals for some projects and things like that, just to be able to have animals on the property and enjoy it, and use, use that couple acres up front that's just already been tilled and farmed and things like that, just utilize it, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of planning commission. Before using application requesting approval to rezone approximately 10 acres from R1A, one-family residential to A1 agricultural. Property is located at 4185 East Patterson Road, just west of the Patterson Road 675 underpass. As you can see by the aerial, the property is currently vacant, there are no structures on the property, and it is being used agriculturally. It was recently purchased by the applicant from Miami Valley Research Park and, and has been used in the past simply as agricultural. The property is designated as low-density residential on the city Beaver Creek Land Use Plan. It is within that VPA 62. If you look at VPA 62 in the land use plan, it doesn't really specify anything for that low-density residential portion, the yellow part, it just talks about if in the future the Bergamo property here were to redevelop to something commercial, something commercial would be considered in that southern portion of 62. But that northern portion of VPA 62, where this property is located, would still remain as low-density residential. With this downzoning, that low-density residential designation would still remain with the applicant expressing his desire to simply build one home on that 10 acres. As far as the zoning goes, as I stated, the property is zoned R1A. To the north is zoned A1 agricultural. To the south, we have A1 agricultural as well, which is the Mount St. John's Bergamo property. To the east across 675 is also R1A. That is currently agricultural land. The city just purchased that property for a future park. Before 675, which is the white area there, was constructed, all of this R1A property was one single property. So, it was simply divided up when, when the highway went through there, when the right-of-way was acquired. And from what I could find, it appears that the property was rezoned or designated R1A when the city was incorporated in 1981. Prior to that, all of, all of this R1A property on both sides of the highway was zoned as agricultural. So, based on the applicant's request to simply have one, one single-family home and then also have a small hobby farm, staff doesn't see any concerns with that. We also do want to point out that if the applicant were to build any barns or additional accessory structures, they would have to be at least 50 feet from that R1A residential property to the east, so there would be that buffer there. But staff is recommending approval with, as outlined in the attached resolution, because it is a straight rezoning, there are no conditions. If you have any questions, I can answer them following the public hearing.
Thank you. You heard the drill about the public hearing, so if you wish to speak, please step forward and state your name and address, and give us your three minutes. Boy, dead silence. Dang. Last chance? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and ask if we had any written input.
We did receive one email from Jeff Church of 1043 Joffrey Place that was in opposition of the case. Planning Commission did also receive a copy of the email.
Fine, thank you. I will start next to me this time. You're up.
Mr. Chair, nothing.
I had a question for staff, real quick. So, I'm going to sound a little stupid for asking this, but R1A to an A1, what are the major changes?
The real, the only benefit to the applicant is to be able to have animals, like, otherwise, he could, with the R1A, he could have his one house, but he wouldn't be able to have, you know, chickens or cows or whatever. So, that, when we talked about it, that was his reasoning for wanting to downzone back to the A1. Other than that, one of the benefits to having an A1 parcel this size is to be able to, you can, he can construct as big an outbuilding as he wants, whereas with an R1A designation, he's limited to 50% of the footprint of his primary structure.
What about height restrictions?
The height restrictions are still the same.
Okay.
So, well, there is no height restriction on the garage, but the height restriction on the house is still two and a half stories.
But in A1, they could easily build a?
In A1, he can still do two and a half-story house, but there isn't, like, as far as any limitations on the size or the height of the barn, there aren't.
Okay.
It's really just that 50, it would have to be 50 feet from the side property line.
Do you know approximately how wide that property is?
I believe it's three, I think it was 370 at the front, 320 at the back.
Okay, so it's, it's pretty wide then, to be able to accommodate a structure like that?
Yeah, decently wide.
I don't have any further questions. I appreciate it. Thank you.
No questions, Mr. Chair.
Dang. I just have one, and you answered one, and I think the rest is probably out of time. Sorry. I seem to recall that there were a couple of plans to develop this as R1A over the years, and part of the problem is the property is so narrow, it would be almost impossible to get two rows of lots down there, and one row would simply not give you enough, enough lots to make it feasible in terms of development. So, this seems to make sense to me. I didn't realize that this was part of the Research Park property.
Yes.
It's kind of odd that it would be R1A, but that, I guess that goes back, doesn't it?
Yeah, I mean, when the city was incorporated, they rezoned this piece and the agricultural property across the street to also, I mean, it was all R1A. It was all one giant R1A parcel, so.
So, that's probably why it's never developed as R1A, but it, the, if it was Research Park property, they could conceivably have come in and say, we'd like to put an office building there.
I mean, the land use plan does designate the area as low-density residential, so, they would have that limitation.
I have one question for the applicant, if you would. Since, it looks like better than half of that is wooded, are you planning on doing any, any clearing back there other than what you would need to build the house?
Just the underbrush. I'm going to leave all the big trees and everything like that, but I'm going to make it so we can walk through it and actually enjoy it.
Well, yeah, that would be helpful.
Yeah, the actual wooded part, no, I'm not, I'm not going to clear anything out.
The point I'm making is for folks who might think that he's going to be running a herd of cattle or, or a Romuta of horses, there isn't much space for them there. I think the, the concerns of the neighbors were that there would be a plethora of animals on your property, and I, I'm asking you, is that what you have in mind?
No, just a few, few animals, maybe some acow or two, and a couple goats, some chickens.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I need to know, and you obviously know about the setback on the barn.
Yes, yeah.
And to be a good neighbor, if you do build a barn, the fur, the closer you get it to I-675, the happier your neighbors are going to be.
Yeah.
So, just a, just a suggestion. We can't condition that. Okay, gentlemen, second helpings. This is a straight rezoning, that's why there are no, no conditions, so I need a motion.
Ms. Chair, motion to approve.
Ms. Jarrett, motion to approve Z-22-2 Thomas rezoning.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll second.
And I have a second, and this is unusual. We don't do too many downzoning, so.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Diker?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. And do we have anything else? Staff, we're good? Okay, I have a, need a motion to adjourn?
Ms. Jarrett, motion to adjourn the December 7, 2022 Planning Commission meeting.
Mr. Chair, I second.
And I have a second, and we are at 6:50. Last meeting of the year, gentlemen.